All right. Thank you for coming, everybody, tonight. Love to go over some of the projects and everything that we've got going on here at the club. What I would like to ask is, let's get us through the presentation, and then, at the end, if we have any questions, we'll answer them, everything that we can. This meeting is with our club president, Doug Heidt. We'll give him a hand. Lot going on. I've got some staff members here I'd like to recognize. Cindy, our controller, is here. Katie, Anna, Sherrell, Jim Tiltz, Jeff Pratt, and John Cockerham. So, let's give them a hand. We've certainly got a lot of stuff going on at the club. I'm sure we're gonna get to it. Worked all day today.
Yeah, the battery probably died.
Okay, hold on. Let's see. Weird.
Yeah. You can click that or touch that, I guess.
It's weird. Okay, so, a lot of the upcoming projects that we've got going on right now, the challenge irrigation, holes, we're doing holes, finishing up the project, hole seven through seventeen. Holes fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen are completed. The crew is off at another job. They'll be back on Monday, and they may bring another secondary crew to help us. But our planned project is to get through at the end of August. The county project on hole seventeen and eighteen is completed. You'll see pictures of that. Horse drainages on hole three and four, per the strategic plan, are being done this coming, course closures coming up in August and September. The bridges, we have four small bridges on, the bridge on Three Challenge, eight, two, and eleven on Classic will be redone this year, and they'll actually be widened and expanded so John can get some tractors through all of them. So, that'll help the time on that. Construction and expansion of the tee boxes are also, have been completed, and we'll go through what's been done there. Driving range tee top has been completed, and we also gained about seven or eight hitting spaces up front. So, that's been a great improvement. And the new putting green by the clubhouse will be constructed in mid-August. The challenge irrigation, this is part of going on, that we had an old hydraulic system. This is now going into an electrical system. There's many advantages to that, and I will get to that for you. Here's the pipe that went in on sixteen. Again, a lot of this is being done with, what I would say, minimal scarring on the golf courses. So, that's been going very, very well. Very pleased with the project on that. Here is the swale on eighteen, Classic. There's the big pipe that is underground by the drain that you see there. So, that is a huge improvement on that hole. And we've had some good, glad to hear that. We've had some very heavy rains that have gone through there, and that was an area where we couldn't get a mower through the whole summertime, and that's been a big, big improvement to that hole. There's the driving range tee top, and if you actually go over, you know, to the front of where those backstands are, that's been expanded big time. Good. Okay. This area right here, this was last year's project, so we broke up the irrigation system in two years. But if you take a look, this is to the left of number two on the challenge course. This was an area where we could not grow grass in the past. All of that is actually filling in very nicely. The turf will actually get a lot of density in a two-year time period, but you can see a whole lot of improvement on that. This is to the right of number one on the challenge course. These are things that we don't think about every day, but this was a very sandy area, and this is what it looks like now. So, these irrigation holes are really making a difference. What does that do for our club? We have efficiency in labor, so John is not actually chasing down issues throughout the whole time. There's a cost reduction in repairs and maintenance. It is very frustrating for him to go through that process. The hydraulic to an electrical system is much easier to maintain. And the fourth bullet point here is the one that I like, because we can control each individual head for how long it can be watered. So, if you take, an example, the first hole on the challenge, and if the right side is very dry, we can set those individual heads to run for six, seven minutes, whereas the left side of the green is really a damp area, we can set those for two minutes. So, that creates a really big efficiency. And not only that, we're watering twenty percent more turf on all of the courses. So, that's really helped us. We've constructed new tee boxes. This is the blue tee on Three Challenge. They actually, kind of, from an angle perspective, they're making a lot of sense on where they're pointed, and they're not stuck in the fairway. We have eleven holes that were completed this year, and it's been a big enhancement for the membership, as well as the, how big the tee box sizes are. So, they're actually pretty large. And we have, they're not just, everybody is kind of moving up. Eventually, one day, when we get a little older, we're gonna move, we're gonna tee it forward. Here was the ninth hole on the, that's the white tee on the ninth hole on the Classic. So, that's part of the progress that went on. Here is the finishing hole backdrop to the new clubhouse. And we also had the cutting of the cup ceremony out there, which was a really fun day. So, these are a lot of progress that we've got going on. And with that, I'm going to pass the next portion to our club president, Doug Heidt.
Well, welcome, everybody. Sure glad you all came out, and I don't know how many people we have on Zoom, but welcome. Glad you guys tuned in. So, first, I'd like to just have the board stand and be recognized. We had several board members here in the audience. Let's give these guys a round of applause. They did a lot of good work for the membership and for the club. Well, this is the rendering of the front of the new clubhouse. You all have seen that before.
Click that movement forward.
Yeah, that's fine. Great, thank you. And this slide just talks about the capacity of the new clubhouse. So, main dining, we have seating for a hundred and twenty people. Outdoor, looking out over the finishing hole, a hundred and eighteen. In the bar area, around sixty-eight. And then, we have a private banquet room that actually opens up to the main dining, so you can actually communicate between those two rooms, an additional forty-two, and then, there's a private dining around the corner. So, lots of capacity, and I think as the roof has now gone on, everybody can kind of see the scale of the building, and it's just gonna be fantastic. This is a rendering of the outside terrace, looking out over the new practice green, and obviously, looking out over the new finishing hole. And just some other reminders of, you know, kind of what the space is gonna look like. Above that chandelier is the cupola. That's the big element on top of the roof, and that's gonna let a lot of light come into the main dining room. It's gonna be a very dynamic space. I think everyone's gonna really love it. Then, of course, our infamous wine wall. We finally have a design. We approved the shop drawings a few days ago. So, that's also gonna be a really cool element, separating the bar from the main dining room. So, that, this shot, obviously, is where we are today, looking at the main clubhouse. So, you can see we're building the portico. Everything else is pretty much intact. That pipe's in the ground now, so just about all the stormwater is complete. So, it's really moving along. Our construction schedule shows November twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one as complete construction with a certificate of occupancy. What that means is, we cannot move in. So, that doesn't mean we can start using it at that date. We cannot move in. So, so that's the date, and that date hasn't changed since we started construction. We've held that date. I mean, you know, there's been pluses and minuses with regards to schedule. Right now, we're probably a little, we're about a week behind where we wanted to be at this point in time, but we can make that up over the next few months. So, really proud of the construction team and keeping this thing, you know, right on schedule. That shows the back, or the green side of the terrace, or where those trusses are laying. You know, that's actually the outdoor terrace area, you know, with this umbrella terrace over the top of it. So, I think it's gonna be a really cool space. And as we were building this thing, and continuing to look at the plans, and getting input from Jim Tiltz, our new food and beverage manager, and Jeff Kennedy, our service manager, we decided that, you know, it's gonna be a lot better membership experience if we put another bar. So, this bar is in the southwest corner of the building. If I can figure out how to make this hangover. Here we go. So, this is the private dining room. This is where the locker rooms are. That happens to be the women's locker rooms, and no, you can't see in those windows. You go down this door, and you can, you know, as you're coming off the practice green, grab a beer, go into the men's locker room, whatever. So, because it's just down that hall. But this serves two purposes. Number one, it is a bar. Number two, it's a big serving station for the staff, so that they have ready access to whatever they might need to service all of that outdoor seating. So, I think a great addition to the project. We're still just kind of designing this thing. We haven't quite got it all priced out, but it's something that we felt was a really good add to the project. So, with that, I want to turn it back to Steve.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So, the duties of the GM, what are my tasks to do here at the club? Task was staying on course with the five-year strategic plan. So, we're constantly updating that program. Financial responsibility and the budgets that are set by the board, that's part of my duty. The performance excellence program, the membership feedback for improvements, this is a very, very important stuff, and I'll go through the slides with that. But we review that at the end, when we get the statistics on what the members are telling us. We review that, I review that with the managers, as well as each committee. So, the committees work on this constantly. And I develop action plans per the performance excellence survey. Yesterday, we sent out the performance excellence survey for you to fill out online. We got an email back from Chambers saying that we already had a hundred and seventy-six people do the survey, which is very good, but we would like to have a very high percentage of our members do that. So, I please ask you all to fill that survey out. It actually does help us big time with the improvements and realistically, a pecking order. So, we take that serious. We did a rules video this past year, and I'm gonna explain to you that our managers put this together, and I'm putting clips in my GM report for all of the rules that we have here at the club. We have many, many new members that have signed up, so this is very important to the club. Current status right now, membership statistics, equity golf, we have five hundred and fifty-two equity golfers, we have a hundred and twenty-six tennis, and three hundred and ninety-five social members. Last year, so I want to make this pretty clear, last year, starting in June of twenty-twenty to membership signups, we've had, oh, that got switched around again, Anna, but anyway, that golf is, we've had a hundred, that's actually, okay, so, social, we've had a hundred and thirty-five social memberships come in, but with golf, sixty-one of them are on the golf waiting list, and seven are on the tennis waiting list. We've had thirty-six of them come in in tennis, and we've had fifty-six golfers, and then, if you add in the sixty-one that are on the waiting list, that's a huge number. So, that's happened in the past thirteen months. The new card barn that we built, we've got bag storage, we've got staging areas over there, which is also by the clubhouse. We've got a larger park capacity, storage space over there. We have eighty-eight carts that can fit in there, and we have a hundred and twenty-eight bags, and it's, they're in condition. Here's where we came from four years ago. This is what the outdoor bar looked at. This is after a big storm here on the left-hand side. This was what we had on the pool deck, and obviously, minimal usage on the bar. We've made a lot of changes with this. Here's the club usage, and I want to explain this a little bit. So, the return investment on that bar, January of two thousand and seventeen, we had built three hundred and seventeen social memberships. At that point in time, going back maybe four, five, six months before and after, we were always sitting at about three hundred and five, three hundred and seven social memberships, and that number did not change for a long period of time. This past billing, we built three hundred and ninety-five social memberships. If I just took sixty of those memberships and applied the dues, so it comes out to a hundred and thirty-two thousand yearly. So, realistically, that bar in four years has paid for itself, and that does not count the initiation fees and the food and beverage spending. So, it's been, obviously, a big winner, and I wanted to mention that to everybody, because I get asked that all the time. These are some of the improvements that we had. These are the hard courts that got done this year. You can see the guy on the right sanding and smoothing out the surface, and that's what we have over at tennis right now. Here was an old concrete path that we had behind Courts One and Two, and this is what it looks like now. It's a little bit of a difference. Does that look like a little different? Here's issues that came up about three weeks ago. John had called me up, and we had a pipe crush. This is on the sixteenth hole on the challenge, about forty yards from the green. It was a very wet area. We dug it out. Here's what the pipe used to look like, and we just put in new pipe. They did a really excellent job with that. Balancing act between our membership caps. So, if you take a look at our operating budgets and capital budgets, just overall, the club will take the strategic plan and take a look at all of the operational needs, whether they're new staffing and everything, and Jeff, and having different people onboard, having new hires over here. So, technically, the operating budget, if we use a lot of that, that comes out to a lot of less money going in capital. But I would just tell you that the club has a huge urgency to improve big time. So, the capital dollars are very, very important to the club, that we take that. And then, we allocate those fundings into the strategic plan. So, we constantly update that plan. Of our initiation fees, so when we're on a waiting list, just to let you know some of the things that we're working on, all of the initiation fees go into capital. So, we take a look at those dollars, and as we're on a waiting list, we have a little bit of an issue there, as far as how much funding we have that goes into capital. We're on a waiting list for golf and tennis. I'll show you a statistic on the club's attrition rate. The initiation fees are increasing, and then, the non-resident program is suspended because we have a waiting list. Just want to point out the rounds count. So, if you take a look at the totals of the rounds count, and these statistics are gonna be very important. Last year, we did sixty-nine thousand rounds during the COVID period. This year, through the first six months, I've got it pointed out here, we're, we have forty-eight hundred more rounds being played this year. And if you take a look at the guest certificates, last year, we didn't allow the guests to come out and everything. So, if you take a look at the guest column, we did very little in guest fees here, and then, it was very, very top-heavy here. These two columns over here are the full membership golf rounds on the classic course and on the challenge course. Here's the number of rounds that we do seniors. Here are the limited rounds. Those are the seventy-two players, and this is the limited access. So, we actually take count every month on what's going on on that. So, in summary, this is the statistic on the way this club uses the membership. We have two hundred and ninety-six combination full golf members that get to play all the time. That's sixteen point eight rounds a month. Limited access, we have eighty-six members. These are Monday through Friday, after twelve o'clock, Saturday, Sunday, anytime. They average seven point six eight. Limited rounds, we have a hundred and seventy-one members that use the club, play on an average through the first six months of the year, four point five three. We look at this T-sheet to look at when the members are playing. So, full golfing members play an average of a hundred and ninety-two rounds a month. You guys know who you are. A year, excuse me. Limited rounds and limited access together is seventy-one rounds. So, that's the combination of the other two membership. That is exactly the national average of private clubs. Seventeen hundred private clubs were surveyed. The national average per membership is seventy-one rounds. So, forty-six and a half percent of our members play the national average, fifty-three percent play three times the national average. So, that's a statistic. So, when we're taking a look at the membership paths, I will tell you that we're looking at rounds, and I'll go through this. We also stay open on Monday, when other private clubs and the statistics are closed on Mondays. We also play golf when we're airifying one golf course. The other golf course is open. Other private clubs, statistically, either close for a couple of weeks totally, or for the month. Here is the attrition rate that we're having right now. So, if you take a look at the total number of equity golf resignations, so in two thousand and fifteen, we had twenty-five golfers resign. So, our five, six-year average is about twenty-two a year. So, we're losing two golfers a month. Conclusion, what does all this mean? So, through our membership committee meeting, we're looking at all statistics for membership caps, possibly versus the type of golfing membership. So, realistically, if we're having full golfers come in, those statistics show that they play a lot of golf. If we have a combination of other memberships, you're looking at where you won't feel the rounds as much. So, the membership equity waiting list right now is over three years right now. So, that, that's actually a little bit of an issue. The initiation fees coincide with the capital dollar. So, when we're being held up with the number of rounds, or how many golfers we're letting in, that actually has an effect on the total capital dollars that are being spent. So, we're taking a look at that very closely. And it's a striving balance between the membership experience for the number of rounds and the future capital needs. So, that's something that we're actually taking a look at. This is a departmental action plan. So, going back to the strategic plan that we had, these are what action items are going through the departments. Staffing for the new and existing clubhouse. We're preparing a timeline to move into the new clubhouse. Operational improvements. Just to let you know where we are with that, we have two new food and beverage managers. I think they're doing a wonderful job. Can't ask one person to do that entire job from the amount of business that we're doing. Jim is constantly around doing everything, and Jeff, I will tell you, Jeff Kennedy is spending about eighty percent of his time is recruiting new people, and you're seeing that. It's just, it takes a lot of effort to do all that. We're working really hard on having an active food and beverage calendar, so our events are filling up very quickly. We opened up the bar on Wednesdays, and then, the dinner specials are going extremely well, Thursday through Sunday. Those are really going well. And I wanted to mention this, that Lucas does an exceptional job. When we have the county inspector come in and do the inspection on the kitchen, and they do a report, they, about three months ago, the inspector came to me and said, "Steve, you ought to be really proud of this club. This is one of the cleanest kitchens I come into the county all year." So, Lucas really does a wonderful job on that. That's something to be thankful of. But the scheduling events and the T-sheet management is something that Jeff constantly works on. We have a lot of events, so those are things that he's working on. The member service improvements. This year, he's been challenged, as well as last year, obviously, with the COVID conditions and not being in a card barn and stuff like that. That's been pretty good, and he's getting ready to move into a new clubhouse. So, those operations, too, that'll be a completely different deal for us, because the clubhouse was always detached. So, he can have a Mother's Day sale and leave the pro shop open later on at night, and do additional stuff that we didn't do in the past. Golf course maintenance, finishing up the challenge irrigation this year, the building of a new putting green in August, and then, the many golf course improvements that are going on. That's just an ongoing, that's what John constantly works on all day. Tennis facility, been a very bit bright spot here at the club. The new improved programs that we had, we ran new leagues, new exciting things. We had a men's interclub league. We had over sixty men play on Thursday nights, getting together, different people, meeting each other. It's just been phenomenal. We had, a couples league is going on right now. That's been for about ten weeks. We have over ninety people that signed up to play in the couples league. It's just, just an incredible amount of people using the club, and that's been a home run. Long-range planting, pickleball, we've got that in the works, where they were on the courts, on the hard courts before. Now, we're looking at building our own public pickleball courts. New events, such as breakfast at Wimbledon, the courts are full. Everybody was wearing white, was wonderful. And this is a big statistic here, the number of golfing members actively involved in tennis. So, you don't see this in the tennis statistic, but we have over sixty golfing members that are very actively involved. And what I mean by actively involved is, they're either in the SLGA mixed leagues, the women's leagues, and so, that's, it's been very, very, very good. These are the budget challenges that we have for two thousand and twenty-two. Departmental managers are actively looking for staff. It's going all over the place. I will say that between Jeff and Jim, they've been starting to hire and getting a lot of people looking for positions now, so that's been a good thing. Payroll budgets, adding different staff in different departments. We're in the budget season right now, so I'm working on that. The minimum wage is going up, so that'll affect the club. I think on September first, it goes to ten dollars an hour. It's not like we have a whole lot of people in there, but these things are gonna go all the way up in the next few years to fifteen dollars an hour. That will affect the club. Competitive benefits, the health insurance, rising costs, we were on Health First Health Plans, been with them for five or six years. They're now leaving the group insurance market, and we're going out for bid, and that is gonna be a big increase for us, for that. And that's, that's, that's gonna be a little bit of an issue. Materials, all of the pricing on the materials, and they're hard to get. I know that, for those of you that are running businesses, that's going across the board. And then, the liability, insurance coverages on the new building, a little bit of that's tied into the replacement cost with inflation. So, that's actually going up as well. I'm gonna hand this over to you, Mr. Doug.
Okay, so, we didn't spend all the money on the new clubhouse. We do have a little bit left over. So, our first priority for the existing building here was to refresh this room, so it'll get new carpet paint, ceiling tile, new window treatments, new light fixtures. So, it'll be modernized, so that it's really a nice event area. And then, we had to defer other areas of this building for refresh, so hopefully, we can get these accomplished next year. But the ideas are that we would create a fitness center, do a bathroom refresh on the lower level, potentially, a dedicated card room. And these are really, at this point, these are just ideas. Nothing's really been designed. So, the only refresh that'll happen is, you'll come in the front entrance, the whole front entrance, up the stairs to the mezzanine, and then, into this building. So, it'll all look really nice and connected to the new clubhouse. So, that'll be, that'll be a really nice, nice event area for the club. We also did, in the last few months, kind of a land use planning study, and just looking at opportunities. Where do we have opportunities? How can we best use the land that we have available? One of which is, of course, how do we get a better golf short team practice area? And as it turns out, you know, we actually own this circle that you can see out the windows here. And so, our civil engineers took a look at how we could change the traffic pattern. And so our civil engineers took a look at how we could change the traffic patterns there, incorporate that land, and then add that to land on on the left side of the circle to really create a nice short game practice area. We also looked at how we could create some additional parking. And so right now, these are all just ideas. Nothing's really being implemented right now. And then, of course, future course improvements and future tennis improvements. Okay, back to you, Steve.
Thank you. So back in two thousand and nine, the club, when we went through the recession, the club was at a very low point in our membership. We added different membership categories, the limited rounds, limited access. You can see that in the previous slides that I showed you, half of our membership is is either on the limited access or the limited rounds. That's been a very good program for us. At that point in time, we were down to three hundred and sixty-five golfing memberships, which was very low. We only spent, I would tell you, in nineteen, two thousand and nine, we only spent ninety-one thousand is all we had to put back into the club. So from two thousand and nine to where we are today is is just incredible. And then right now, in the final stages of this business cycle, we're maintaining the member experience through growth, operational improvements, and maintaining the club and providing value with with what I would say better amenities for all of us. Strategic planning, I'm going to go through some of this, but the future course upgrades and improvements, those are in the the strategic plan. The classic course putting green is going to go with the short game area that we're proposing, which which Mr. Hyde said is out here in the traffic circle. And then what we're looking at is, in the strategic plan, we're the challenge ball caps being replaced, which are falling apart, like number seven on the challenge, twelve. The twelve hole actually wraps around and and there's ball caps behind the thirteenth tee and then the fourteenth green area. So the gentleman that came out and did the new eighteen green on the classic course, which is nine, which will be eighteen, this is a proposed classic concept of a rock wall in front of the eighteenth green. This is a much better picture of of what we can propose for the eighteen green. And why this is important is is because this area right in here, which which there's grass in here right now, we would take all this fill and that fill would be very, very important to have over into the new short game area. So those two areas would have to be done together. Then you could do the fourteenth hole and the twelfth hole. But I just wanted to point this out, that these are some proposed changes that we've got. After the clubhouse is open, we're looking at different avenues to improve these golf courses. And this is one of the concepts I think it's really deep. This is what we talked about earlier, the equity golf on August first, I think it's a couple of weeks away, goes to twelve thousand, tennis goes to two, and social is fifteen hundred. Common inquiries that Anna gets at the membership office, what kind of memberships are being offered? What kind of amenities do we have at the club? How long is the current waiting list? Unfortunately, right now, it's not very enticing to tell somebody it's three years or three and a half years to get into golf. So that's something we're working on. And what kind of events are being held at Sundry? What kind of things do we do? Some of the things that we're proud of with the golf department is the type of men's member guests, ladies member guests that we run here, the member members. These are all quality events that we run. We're very proud of them. We're actually working extremely hard getting our members more involved into using the club. So we're providing club social activities with various membership categories as well as age of the categories on what's happening there, a total mixture of events, trying not to have the same old events over and over again. And all departmental managers are working on greater participation in all events and those of you know, we're selling out here and there on a lot of events that we're running, which is which is very good. We are a weather-dependent business. This this is the seventh hole on the classic, and thank God we fixed that. Does that that close that golf course for for periods of time? I'd like to thank the staff that we have here, and I I recognize them earlier, but we're really proud of the efforts that they gave during the COVID timeframe and their membership hanging in there with us. That was a that was a very difficult time and very sympathetic to anybody that if we had any losses during COVID, that's that's not very good. And like to thank the committee for all of the work that they're putting in. So all of these plans and the strategic plan that comes off of this performance excellence survey is a big deal for the club. So and hopefully, you were all here for the Fourth of July fireworks, because that was actually an amazing event. It had four hundred people here showed up and that was wonderful. And no rain, very close. And we will open it up for questions. If you have any questions, this is I'm like, thank you for coming out. Gives you a good gives you a good idea of what's happening here at the club and there's a there's a lot going on. So he asked, if you're a golfing member. I'm going to repeat the question. He's an admiral, I'll tell you, he's a tough bird and I'll work with this every single month. I'm going to make fun of you when I get a chance. The answer is, is if you're a golf member, can you go play tennis? Can you go play pickleball? The answer is yes. Years ago, back in two thousand and eight and nine, you had to buy a preferred membership. But if you are buying an equity golf membership, which is one of those three categories, you get tennis, you get all that. So one thing that we've done is is when we're looking at these interclub leagues that I mentioned earlier about tennis, we have so many golfers that are participating in that. They're getting connected at the club and everybody's meeting new people. These are great things that we've got going on. So yes, you get that. Wonderful question. You want me to repeat the question again? I know she did. Equity golf waiting list people are counted. They come in and pay us a deposit to hold their their spot. And with that, they are instantly social members. They pay social dues. So their rules to get into playing golf is what the social member does once a month and they pay all a card. So that's a great question. Yes. So what happens is, is right now, Anna, we've got how many on the waiting list? Sixty-nine golfers are on the waiting list. Sixty-nine golfers. With the sixty-nine golfers, who can tell me how many, what's our average attrition rate for golf right now? How many a month? Two a month, twenty-two.
You know why? Because you've got sixty-nine people behind everybody else.
That's right. So you've got sixty-nine. So the so the answer is, is we're telling people it's over a three-year wait to get into the club. Sixty-nine is not going to stop there either. That'll go to, I I got a little money in my pocket saying we're going to go to eighty easily by the end of the year. Easy.
Having that waiting list, that affects your bottom line and part of the people are needing a lot, then we get a lot of our initiation fees coming in.
Yes, so what happens is, is we project an initiation fee budget, and that's part of our longer-range plan. So we do have baked in X amount of dollars that we feel we're going to collect on the initiation fees. Right now, we have to have people leave the club to collect those fees. Right now of the, so we're on last year's waiting list, the next twenty-one people out of sixty-five, sixty-nine gave us six thousand dollars. From twenty-two all the way to sixty-nine have given us eight thousand dollars. On August first, if you miss that train, it's twelve thousand.
You've mentioned a lot, we've got a long wait. You can figure, I mean, talk about how we can incorporate these people, how do we, I mean, it sounds like the most open thing is, we need these people and you can get more money from the club. But I would invite today, how do you reckon keeping the club in the shape that it's in or better serving if we want to be hard to keep the dollar amount that we want to bring in? How do we propose keeping the club in better shape with increasing rounds then and sixty-nine people waiting?
So the operating budgets for that, for example, with John, the operating budgets, we're getting more people, more help. We we're getting, we've raised the hourly wages for all that. So we're going to have to, the other other way to get more money is to raise dues for for all the people that go there. So that's the only thing we can do. So, yeah, but I just want to let you know that in the environment that we're in right now, we've raised our our, the kitchen staff makes a lot more money than they did three, four years ago. John's staff will continue to to make more money. We've had, we we, I had one food and beverage manager to hire in two thousand and twenty-one. I hired two. I knew I couldn't do it with one, so I had to get another guy and that's made a world of difference. I would probably be the first one to tell you that we tried to do this game with one food and beverage manager and and without a service manager and the amount of time these both guys are here, we need that. So those those, we're we're putting that in the budget.
There are a few part questions, Steve. So the first is, you created the cap years ago. We've talked about this for years and before.
Yeah.
And it was based on a formula that the USGA and and many others gave you that said, really, with the holes we had, this is what we could support. And so to hear us talk now about changing that after all of these years, I wonder what's changed. I don't think anything, we still have thirty-six holes. But the real question is, is what you showed earlier in terms of the membership utilization, right? So we've got a variety of our golf memberships using it at the national average. And almost three hundred of our golf memberships using it three X back, right? Three hundred times that round count. When we couple out operational dues and budgets and these things, there are things we can do, right? The way we do cart fees and way, those are being absorbed by everyone, but not proportionally to those playing three times the national average. Things like our cart lease program that encourages, quite frankly, high levels of play. Things like only having a single cart fee, but I can use two carts. If my if my wife wants to come play golf, she can use one of our carts for free, right? Even though I pay for mine anyway. And so rather than focus on the sixty-six people, it feels like we have the opportunity to take the five hundred and fifty and reallocate the way we focus that to make sure that they're getting the greatest experience possible and not dilute that when we have other ways to look at the same.
Correct. So so that's a great question. I'm going to try to figure out how to repeat that. But the allocation of the number of golf members that we have versus national averages and everything else, one point that I did want to make is, is the USGA doesn't know Sundry Country Club and the and the way we do the business model here. I may get a point that our memberships.
Did you not set the number?
No, I don't set the number.
For years, we've operated under the number that we set.
Correct. So what happens is, is the way the memberships use this, that's why I'm in the statistical world, the memberships, the way the memberships come in to the club, the next ten memberships, Anna, that are waiting online, how many are full and how many are the limited access or limited rounds?
Of those that entered the survey, we sent out five, about eight or four. Ten or so are limited and there's someone else.
So of the next ten, of the next ten.
The next ten, sorry. Two are unlimited and about seven are limited access.
So there you go. So two are limited. So two of them, we can assume if they're using it the way everybody else is using it, they're going to play maybe in the neighborhood of two hundred rounds a year. The other people might play fifty rounds a year. They might play sixty rounds a year. So this is a balancing act, and I will tell you, it's a balancing act of of a formula on what, how much money we can get from an improvements. But the types of memberships that are being here using at the club is why we take and look at these statistics. So these are things that are worked through the membership committee and and those are things that we're working on. Mrs. Kenyon?
It's important to be mindful of what clubs are doing to the membership. If you're not connected, it's a different shift.
Correct. So so the one thing here, that's a great point. So she's looking at what types of memberships are they, full family and everything else. I would tell you, back in two thousand and five, we had three hundred and twenty-five full family golfers. That means husband and wife play. Three hundred and twenty-five back into fifteen, sixteen years later, we have one hundred and thirteen. So that's a big difference. That's a that's a big, big difference in the the way these memberships are being used. It is a perplexing problem. The other thing too is, is when you take a look at your usage on here, who actually really struggles to get a tee time here to play golf?
If you don't play in a group, if you don't play in a group, you get a tee time.
Well, right, well, and that's that's.
If you don't play in a group, but if I think you're a member, it won't be some ranking.
Right, so.
You're not going to have tee time.
Yeah, so the biggest thing that we did and one thing that helped grow the membership, the SLGA plays on Tuesdays, the men's group was only on Wednesdays. But we said, we can't survive, back when we had three hundred and sixty golfing members, saying, members that are younger in age, that work on the weekends, we needed to change the men's group on Saturday, and that has worked. That's been a big enhancement for the club.
To follow up on this gentleman's question here, what was our maintenance budget for the golf courses five years ago?
Five years ago, it was one point six million. It's two million plus right now. Yeah.
How many people play golf now?
Over a thousand from a various combination. Absolutely, over a thousand, if you count kids and everything. We don't know what we're going to do. What we're going to do with budget, we're going to balance. We have a total balancing act of what we want to do here. This club right now, I would tell you, has a high need for capital spending. So if I have a membership cap, that's going to be, that's going to be an issue. And our operational budgets are going up because of what I'm telling you, wages, insurances, things like that. This is what we need. So the club, we're we're working through those budgets and club, club needs all that. So that's that's been a big deal. Yeah, you know what? The annual rounds, it's a great question, because the annual rounds right now, we did during COVID, we had, and the mission, the biggest issue that we had there were we had one rider in a cart and we we can't, we can't do this. This club cannot do that. Thirty-six hole clubs can't do that. Once we put two riders in a cart, this year, we're seeing that the rounds are only minimal up from last year with a greater, we actually reduced the summer membership program to thirty. I think we had thirty-seven or thirty-eight that were in it. Last year, we had a lot more people in it, but the lot more people in it got us to a membership cap. So there's an argument for that.
Follow up question. You mentioned you think you're not a breather?
No, I'm I'm, I'm fired up. I could, I could, I could, I could run around and Mike Tyson couldn't get me right now in fifteen seconds, but I'll be running, my legs will be churning.
It's an easy question for anybody wanting to answer.
Yeah.
You mentioned we got about a thousand people to play golf.
I'm I'm guessing there.
And we've got lots of capital expenditure, right? So we know these two things. But the idea that these next sixty people are somehow going to solve our capital problem in any way, shape, or form, when we've got a thousand people with a very vested interest, seems like a gross imbalance of focus. You've got a group of people here who are deeply invested in this club and willing to continue to invest, as seen by what we've been able to accomplish, which has been great to this point. It feels very short-sighted. If I ask you, do you think bringing more members in is the solution?
Well, I will say this, and this is, this is true. What I, what I, no, I'm not going to answer it like that. I'm going around this circle. Everybody get ready, get on a merry-go-round. Okay, so the answer to that is, is, is the very first thing is, is if I have sixty-nine golfers on a waiting list, I don't think it's very good to tell somebody it's three and a half years wait. Down the road, they go, in my opinion. I don't know where they're going, but they're not coming here and I'm not flagging.
Hypothetical.
Hypothetical, but I would say to wean in a few people for for that, just to show some movement in the list, one thing is, is that's, that's something there, but, you know, or we just pay more and that's okay. I mean, that's, that's okay too. So there's a balance in that.
Can I clarify?
Yeah.
So when you
So when you take the membership survey, there are some specific questions that hit on these issues, right? And as a board, you know, and Steve and, and staff, you know, we're, we're thinking through all these options, right? So please go out the membership survey, give us your opinion. That'll help, that'll help guide us. I mean, because, you know, we have a lot of deferred projects in this club. There's a lot of stuff wearing out and we're going to need more capital money in order to keep up with the current facilities. So that means dues increase, cart fee increase. We're, we're, obviously we're, we're raising the joining fees. The, the lack of attrition in the club is probably costing us a $200,000 hole in our budgets just this year. So it all works together. It's not, it's not an either or decision. You know, it's a, it's a balancing. It all works together.
Do you have a projection on what cost increase would lead to what attrition? When you were going through the process, did you have yourself $100 a month of extra will cost us 50 members a year?
I'd say it'd be impossible to estimate.
We don't think that there's a national average, national averages of everything. We don't think that there's a national average of cost in an area.
No, I, I, I don't know that. I mean, we had, when we were going back.
Did we ever survey the basis when we were doing the initial projection for building out here? Did we say, what amount of money are you willing to take on in the initial improvement? We did not that the cost of it. We figured out the price of all the dollars.
Yeah.
There were some studies done on that.
Just, just statistically speaking, when we went down and I showed you in 2008 and nine, when we went down to 365 Equity Golf memberships, I know we did back to back 10%, 12% and all of that. We didn't really gain that actually, that hurts a little bit. So, but then, you know what? We were in a down economy, so it's, it's, it's hard to say. I mean, at the, if the stock market drops, who knows? But, you know, I would tell you, I mean, I was here and one thing, I had some, some experience with some members and just a quick story that I had, I mean, we had some really great people and when that happened, they would come in and come to my office and say, Steve, I'm sorry, I'm leaving the club. And I go, wow, you're leaving the club and it's not me, but I'm helping my kids. So the situation for individual people are, are, are different. So we haven't experienced that. We've been playing, you know, I would tell you, we're a weather dependent business. We've been very fortunate with the weather this year with revenues and things that we've done, but we've also had a great economy for, for a long period of time and that's, that's been, and that's helped us.
Now, Steve, you regularly reference surveys about numbers of rounds of golf in USGA clubs. I think one of the things that boards should share with the membership was the average of monthly dues for a club of our spoken size and the amenities that we are trying to accomplish. The issue is down to, are we paying a sufficient amount of dollars for the pleasure of being a member of this club? And secondly, if you look at the strategic plan, what are the, if you're looking at the amenities of the entire corporation, what, what we are expecting in the membership, what is the cost for that? Because if you don't do that, you're going to be going in circles chasing members. So just then, just as an example, should we be environmentally friendly? Should we in fact have window gardens, course, whatever? Look, think outside the box to get the things done, but I would say that based upon my little bit of knowledge, the cost of being a member of this club is very, very important for folks in the membership. We should think about looking at national statistics to understand what the positions are.
We actually do have that data and we, you know, be glad to share it on the website to all the members, but we do what's called club benchmarking. That's a service that, that we buy into. So, so, so we do have that data and your, your assumption is correct. Our dues are low comparatively speaking to other clubs of our caliber with two 18-hole golf courses and, and all of the other amenities that we have.
Carrie.
I've got a question. A couple. Well, the limited access, I, first off, I question why the thought of having a three-year waiting list, three-year conference for waiting lists, because to me, to me, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
But I look at some things, I've been a member now for four years, about 10, I'm working on excess, those memberships are all different financial situations. So you really need those different membership options or, or, so I guess the question for the board is, I think, is to make up a shortfall in the funding that you're looking for in capital, is what's the difference, what will be the adjustments needed for limited access products, but to make them all in one single membership, what is, and two, obviously call adjustments, but also I think the food beverage minimum per year of 600, that's called here. What's the bank? That's $50 a month. That's one meal, one meal. So what are those, what's the impact on members to make those adjustments rather than the 20,000 or 10,000 members?
Good thoughts, Carrie. And I, and I think we should do a study on that. We have talked at the board level of increasing the food minimums and, you know, so all, all of these options are on the table. And as we go through our budgeting process, which is basically started right now, Steve and staff are working through their budgets and once they, once they get their budgeting plan together and we see, you know, what, what is the capital needs, what are the operational costs in order to run the club, then, then we'll look at all these options and, and start making decisions as to, you know, which way to go. So don't think it's all one sided or the other. Going back to your first question with regards to what's, what's bad about having a three-year long waitlist? You know, we haven't been in this situation before. So we do think it's really good to have a waitlist. So that's, that's a, that's a positive thing for the club. I think it continues to generate even more interest and excitement about the club. So that's, that's all positive. Now, is three years too long? Is four years too long? I mean, when, when we were vacationing on the West Coast before, and we went to Beller Country Club, they have a three-year long waitlist there as well, right? And they're, and their joining fees are 20,000 and going to 30. So, you know, and it's a similar club to ours, two 18 holes, you know, very nice, very nice clubhouse, you know, really, really a good, a good club. So, so I, I think we're, you know, we're throwing out ideas, trying to get feedback from memberships so that, you know, we understand how members feel about, about these various options. No decisions have been made, you know, all, all of this stuff is, you know, on the table as we go forward.
I think there's compelling reasons to stay with your waitlist. There's compelling reasons to not do that. We've talked about it in the past. When the challenge that the all are being, we have provided ourselves so we must provide it. We need to allow performance excellence to our members, really improve us. So you need to take that into consideration in any way, in a way, whether or not we increase the, the next, the next. People are letting, they're not sure that we let them in, we gave them money, and then the rest of the membership does not benefit from that because you can't keep up the service costs and we're trying to provide.
Yeah, I, I totally agree. I mean, it is about the member experience and we are trying to create a superior member experience here. And, and so we certainly don't want to fail in that.
When you showed us a lot of homes, who did the five-year plan, there was excess capital to be used. Do all these improvements that you showed us, Carrie, are you wiggle room? Do you have a block?
So short term, not a lot of, of wiggle room due to the fact that, you know, we borrowed money in order to build a new clubhouse so that we could have that amenity. Longer term, longer term, yeah, there's lots of wiggle room. You know, five years down the road, we're, we're in pretty good shape, but the, again, the balancing act that, that we have is that we have, we have needs that are coming faster than frankly, than we're going to have the capital funds to deal with. So we've got to, we've got to find us, frankly, we're going to have to find a source for additional capital fund.
We already showed us.
Yes, there's a five-year, there's a, so yeah, there's, so there, the question is, is are there's more stuff that we're doing? The five-year capital plan shows replacement of bulkheads and bridges. The, it also shows the, the refresh of this building. So we have, we have all of that baked into the budget. Tennis plan, a five-year plan, we've got, so we've got all of that going into the, the plan. We're looking at it and that's why we kind of constantly work on that five-year capital plan and, and that goes through the work through our committees. So, yeah, there is, there's definitely room.
I'm just going to bring down.
He wants to knock this building down and build something else.
When Fairfield was here, this was a temporary building. I've been here since 79. I want the building to look like it's actually.
Well, the good thing is, is we've got a new building to go in, so we should be very thankful for that. So that's great. That's great.
Well, there's one, there's one obvious reason. Chip, one obvious reason, the reason that this room is the priority is because we can rent it to outside events, right? And, and create a, a bit of a revenue stream for the club. So, so that's the one reason that we're spending money to refresh this area and do. I, I agree, it's, it's not the best building that we, that we have. That building is, is a great building.
Thank you very much. Appreciate everybody coming here tonight. Thank you. Been a good meeting. Thank you.